Could we have the roll call, please? And I'll do that first, and then we'll do our flag salute and our invocation.
Yes, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Mayor for Tamron.
Here.
Member Schwenk.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart. Councilmember Stewart. Oh.
Here.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, so we will first have our invocation, and that will be by City Manager Erin Adams, followed by the flag salute. So if you could please stand for the invocation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Would you please bow your heads with me? Heavenly Father, Lord, we certainly give you thanks for today. We give you thanks for the blessed city that Temecula has been and the blessed city that it is today. Lord, we just, we lift up all those that are hurting during this global pandemic. We lift up the small business owner, we lift up our healthcare workers, we're lifting up our police and fire and first responders and those that are on the front line and those just trying to make it and make ends meet and get through it. Lord, we just, we pray for strength, we pray for healing. We pray that the end of this pandemic is near and our better days are ahead. And Lord, we just pray over the business and the city this evening. We pray for wisdom, discernment for each of the council members. Lift up the city staff and the, doing the good work and the good business of Temecula. And we ask these things from Jesus, amen.
Thank you, Erin. All right, if you please place your right hand over your heart, repeat after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." All right, thank you. You may be seated. Okay, I am pulling up a second agenda here. And here we go. We're going to do things in a little bit different order this evening, so. I am now going to go to public comments. And Madam City Clerk, how many public comments do we show this evening?
We have eighteen public comments, Madam Mayor.
All right, then if you could please begin public comments.
Yes, I'll go ahead and read the rules, and then I'll start with the first one. A total of thirty minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. For all public hearing or business items on the agenda, each speaker is limited to five minutes. For this meeting, public comments may be submitted and will be read into the record pursuant to the important notice provided at the top of this agenda. The first comment is from Nicole Burkholder. "Just a quick note to say that we support any and all businesses that choose to remain open safely during this most recent round of shutdowns. We will continue to support our local businesses as they attempt to weather the storm. We also support our sheriff and his no-nonsense approach to things. Let's allow the police force to do what it's meant to do, protect and serve rather than wasting time and resources on citizens and businesses." Thank you. The next comment is from Karen Raymond. "I hope this message finds you and yours well. While I am not a resident of Temecula, I live in Marietta. I am disheartened by the lack of affordable housing in our beautiful valley. My husband and I have lived in this valley for nearly twenty-five years. We have two teenage sons. When we moved up here from San Diego, we were college students working in retail and service. We were able to find housing that was affordable, which allowed us to eventually plant our roots and raise our family here. I find it more disheartening that developments are going in that are bigger and more expensive, yet there are no affordable housing developments going in for younger individuals, single parents, frontline workers, et cetera. To the best of my knowledge, council members have once again approved a housing project without making a provision for the local economic workforce. As 2020 highlighted, the local economic workforce is made up of essential workers who ensure the well-being of a community. These workers were among the most exposed to COVID, as well as the most adversely affected by the shutdown. Yet the city refuses to make provisions for local economic workforce to secure attainable home ownership. In other words, council members will happily shop in local stores, enjoy takeout and food delivery by local workers, and accept campaign contributions from business owners who thrive due to local labor but will not represent their local economic workforce constituency. This email is to request that council propose and pass an ordinance to require all future housing developments to require a portion of inclusionary housing." The next comment is Tammy Acme. "It has been brought to my attention that the Temecula City Council has approved a housing project at Inez and Date Street without making provisions for affordable housing for our local economic workforce. Essential workers have kept our city going during this pandemic without any increases in pay. They are exposed to COVID more than anyone else in Temecula. Because of their low pay and lack of job security, essential workers are most in jeopardy when a shutdown occurs. Why does the city of Temecula refuse to make provisions to secure attainable home ownership for local economic workers? Our low-income constituents deserve to be fully represented by the city council members that serve our city. People deserve to have a safe, affordable housing in the city that they work in. I am requesting that the Temecula City Council propose and pass an ordinance to require all future housing developments require a portion of the project to include inclusionary housing." The next speaker is Julie Geary. "I have been a resident of Temecula Valley since 1997 and love this community. I am concerned that the city council has once again approved a housing project on date without considering our local residents' economic feasibility in attaining housing in the community in which they work. 2020 has made the impact of essential workers in our community paramount to our city's success and function. Yet the city has not done enough to fund programs and pathways for our economic workforce to secure attainable home ownership. This community doesn't need more McMansions. If the city council supports our city's small businesses and enterprises, then they need to also support the workforce that keeps the city and businesses running. I urge the council to propose and pass an ordinance to require all future housing developments to include a portion of inclusionary housing. The mandate should require all future developments to include attainable home ownership for the local economic workforce of the city. If our workforce is not included in our housing projects and proposals, then our city doesn't support those that keep the wheels turning. I urge the council and developers to work with Habitat for Humanity, look into funding grants for down payments, and to build smaller, single-family homes which could be purchased by our workforce." The next speaker is Paul Roos. "I was given your email information when I called the city regarding the closure of Paula Park for renovations. The lady I spoke with suggested I put my concern in an email to be raised at the next city council meeting." Okay, here is the actual portion of the comment. "I am part of a small group of Temecula residents that play recreational sand volleyball on the weekends and sometimes during the week, weather permitting. This is only one good public sand volleyball court in the city, which is located at Paula Park. Due to the closure of Paula Park for two to three months for renovations, we were forced to look around for another location to play sand volleyball. We found other parks in the city that had outdoor volleyball courts, such as Riverton Park, but they are not suitable for playing sand volleyball. The sand turned out to be compacted and more like a sand-dirt mix, and/or the court was right next to a street. This leaves us without a location to play and exercise for two months. A city the size of Temecula needs to have more than one good location for sand volleyball players. Sand volleyball is one of the fastest-growing sports in the country, especially for teen girls, as universities and high schools are expanding their athletic programs to include sand volleyball. While Paula Park was not a perfect court, it was acceptable for playing sand volleyball and has restrooms, shade, and lights for playing in the evening. Paula Park is located towards the southern end of our city, so a good idea would be to add at least one more court, preferably in the northern area of the park and maybe Ronald Reagan Park. This would give our group and others alternative locations to play when Paula is being used by other groups or for city-sponsored recreational activities. In summary, to meet the needs of a growing population and sport of sand volleyball, the city needs to build at least one or two additional sand volleyball courts. Thank you for your consideration and time in this matter." The next speaker is Bob Quaid. "My name is Bob Quaid, and I read that last week the Marietta City Council had the courage to stand up to the death grip held by the governor over small businesses and local economies and approve a resolution declaring all businesses who provide a service or product are to be defined as essential if following appropriate proven safety protocols, and demands that our governor reconsider his unfair and uncompassionate discrimination on which businesses can stay open and survive and which businesses must stay closed and face demise. I strongly urge the Temecula City Council to take a similar strong stance to preserve our local businesses and the financial health of its residents and city treasury. As reported by the Riverside University Health System website, from the beginning of 2020 to the end of last week, COVID cases in the city of Temecula were 5,986, a 5.3 case rate based on the current city population of just over 113,000, with 3,893 recovered, a 65% recovery rate, and 44 deaths, a .07 death rate based on total cases. Yes, our hospitals are at capacity, but they have been typically during flu season. Yet there are thousands of people whose dreams and livelihoods have been dying a slow death since the lockdown began last year. For those who say it is irresponsible to keep the city's small businesses open, I would ask them, are you still receiving a paycheck, social security, or other monthly income payment to help support your family? If not, would you still be so righteous? And if so, are you willing to provide financial support to your neighbors who are not so fortunate? Or are you expecting the government to do that for you? There is something more honoring to God than being righteous, and that is being charitable. Once again, I urge the Honorable City Council to follow Marietta's leadership and pass a similar resolution." The next speaker is Isabel Luabeno. "Several people that I care about are tenants at Warehouse at Creekside. They brought it to my attention that owners of this building are not fulfilling terms of the regulatory agreement, an agreement where owners received a $6 million grant as incentive to create affordable housing in the city. The $6 million gift enabled private investors to create a business which currently yields a net income of $374,000 a year. The only apparent condition to Warehouse for Creekside is rent restrictions, which owners are not adhering to. However, in exchange for that single condition, private developers received a grant of $6 million, full occupancy to their building, annual profits, working capital, and the right to sell the building for personal profit. How does this align with the city's goal to provide affordable and accessible housing? More importantly, per the regulatory agreement, owners may not charge tenants for parking or cable or increased rent without the city's approval, both of which has happened for years. Why is the city allowing owners to violate regulatory agreement?" The next speaker is Fern Sweet. "When is the council going to face the all-important problem of housing for our incredible workforce of Temecula? I have written an email or two about this, but still these hard-working folks never get help from the council regarding affordable housing. In 2020, we heard and read how important our essential workers are to all of us. These people are the brave workers in our hospitals and clinics, supermarkets, drugstores, department stores, auto repair shops, helping everyone live as normal a life as possible. These are the same people who do our takeouts and deliveries, who many of us older people depend on. When do we repay them with some affordable housing, so that they don't have to travel huge distances to get to and from work? Many of these people are single moms who have children that need a decent place to live. Why isn't our city council working to help these courageous people, who, who help all of us every day? I should hope our city council would propose and pass an ordinance now that would require all future housing developments, a portion of housing for our essential workforce. Let's help those who work so hard to help us. Thank you." The next speaker is Bob Cal. "Tell me when the Democrat Party promotes riots and shutdowns for a year and then bails out the rioters and puts restaurant owners in jail. People think that political party to be tyrants. When the Democrat Party uses the media and its internal government bodies to rig a presidential election, people believe that party to be tyrants. When people go to DC to try to express their displeasure with this tyranny, they are met with more tyranny. When people look at DC and see it as locked down with soldiers and fences, they look at those that did this as tyrants. When people get fired for expressing their point of view, the people look at this as tyranny. When Democrats want to take people's rights to defend themselves away by a government so big that they can take their rights away, people see that party as tyrants. When a city council supports tyrants, they must self-realize and defend the people or resign." The next speaker is Mary Ames. "I am writing to urge you to adopt an inclusionary housing ordinance for Temecula, an ordinance that would, at the least, require all future residential developments to include a substantial number of units that people who work in Temecula can afford. Many people who work in our city, particularly if they are the head of a single-earner household, cannot afford to live here. That is wrong. We have witnessed just how wrong during the COVID pandemic when Temecula's essential workers, grocery employees, healthcare workers and caregivers, janitorial workers, delivery people and others have ensured our well-being while putting themselves at risk of exposure. Yet the city has made no effort to provide these dedicated workers access to home ownership. I understand, for example, that the city made no requirement of the developer of the 321 units recently approved for construction at Inez and Date Streets that a portion of the units be price-restricted, so that they are affordable to service workers here. Councilmembers and other fortunate residents continue to shop in local stores, enjoy takeout and delivered food, and rely on any number of essential services without giving a thought about the living situation of the people who provide those services. How far away they have to live, how much of their earnings they have to spend on gas just to get to their jobs in Temecula. We must no longer ignore the very people who enable the rest of us to thrive. It's time to develop an imaginative plan to provide them with home ownership opportunities right here where they work. Thank you for your serious consideration of this matter." The next speaker is Laura Hannan. "It was brought to my attention that owners of Warehouse at Creekside are not fulfilling terms of their regulatory agreement, an agreement where owners received a $6 million taxpayer-funded grant as incentive to create affordable housing in the city. The $6 million gift enabled private investors to create a business which currently yields a net income of $374,000 a year. The only apparent condition to Warehouse for Creekside is rent restrictions, which owners are not adhering to. Per the agreement, owners may not charge tenants for parking or cable or increased rent without the city's approval, both of which has happened for years. Why is the city allowing owners to violate the regulatory agreement?" The next speaker is Rick Reese. "It is my understanding that most, if not all, of the Temecula City Council are actively looking for ways to reopen Temecula for business, commerce, and daily living activities in the wake of the Wuhan-based COVID-19 pandemic unleashed by Communist China. A brief drive around town quickly indicates what businesses are open throughout Temecula. Supermarkets like Albertson's, Ralph's, and Stater Brothers obviously have been open and conducting business, albeit with some modifications and distancing procedures put in place. This is also true for local big-box retail establishments like Costco, Best Buy, Walmart, Bevmo, Lowe's, and Home Depot. Even local convenience stores and liquor stores remain open, selling varieties of junk food, lottery tickets, adult magazines, cigarettes, beer, wine, and hard alcohol products to the public. As per the governor's arbitrary state shutdown edicts, these businesses either fall into essential or nonessential categories. Those businesses deemed nonessential, i.e. sit-down restaurants, gymnasiums, barbers and salons, and a host of other specialty stores, churches, and other activities, have borne a terrible burden during this pandemic. No constitutionally protected and allowable activity should ever be deemed as nonessential. However, if all of these deemed essential businesses are open and engaging with the public, then there is no reason why Temecula City Hall cannot be open to the public in the same manner. By limiting city services to online virtual-only contacts, isn't this akin to saying that the services offered by Temecula are less than essential? Surely, Temecula City employees can conduct in-person business with citizens in the same manner as local retail cashiers and clerks at our supermarkets, chain stores, and convenience stores. Plexiglas partitions, marked and spaced waiting lines, and the use of pre-scheduled appointments can be utilized as are routinely done at many of these establishments. Residents comfortable with online services should be able to continue to do business online as well. But for many people, in-person contact is necessary to ensure that proper forms and procedures are utilized, as well as the submitting of notarized documents and identification for licenses, contracts, and other businesses before the city. Temecula City Hall was opened about a decade ago at a cost of some $70 million. Keeping City Hall closed to the public is making this price tag seem like a waste. As elected leaders seeking to open Temecula, you all should be leading the way by opening City Hall and showing the rest of our community, the state, and the nation that we can no longer afford to be held hostage by this Wuhan-released coronavirus. You can set the example for others throughout our state and country to follow and emulate. It's not enough to just talk the talk, it's time to walk the walk. Reopen Temecula City Hall ASAP. Thank you for your time and consideration." The next speaker. There's not a name. The email is, doesn't have a name in it. It just. It states, "As a local business owner, I find it peculiar that while we have grocery stores and open for in-person business, our City Hall doors are locked to the public. If the council, in fact, deems these businesses essential, then what does that say about the city council? City Hall belongs to the good people of Temecula. We do, after all, pay for that $70 million loan and for all of your salaries with our property and business taxes. Therefore, the people have every right to enter the doors of our beautiful building to conduct business. If the businesses can set up the plexiglass and all the other requirements this scamdemic has required, so, then so can Temecula City Hall. Riverside County Board is open to the public. We are able to go in for board meetings. Temecula City Council, open our doors that are paid for by our taxpayer dollars so that we can conduct the necessity of our daily business. Concerned Temecula business owner." And the email address just references Authentic Power. The next comment is from Becky Sulzman. "To the best of my knowledge, council members have once again approved a housing project without making any provisions for the local economic workforce. As 2020 highlighted, the local economic workforce is made up of essential workers who ensure the well-being of a community. These workers were among the most exposed to COVID, as well as the most adversely affected by the shutdown. Yet the city refuses to make provisions for the local economic workforce to secure attainable home ownership. In other words, council members will happily shop in local stores, enjoy takeout and food delivery by local workers, and accept campaign contributions from business owners who thrive due to local labor but will not represent their local economic workforce constituency. This email is to request that the council propose and pass an ordinance to require all future housing developments require a portion of inclusionary housing." The next speaker is Laurel Lamont. "Approximately 25% of Temecula's households earn less than $50,000 a year. Add that to a great number of Temecula's workforce commutes here due to their inability to afford to live here. The demand for affordable housing is so great that current affordable apartments are rarely vacant and wait lists can be up to three years long. Yet the city emphatically insists that affordable, that affordable housing is an important priority. Mayor Edwards, you may or may not remember me as I addressed you on the city council in October of 2017, explaining to you that I work full-time and as a single mother, could only afford a single bedroom to share with my son within one of Temecula's affluent homes. I'm still here, a little less ignorant and a whole lot more informed. You, Mayor Edwards, and, and since then, Members Schwenk and Ron have explained that the housing crisis is due in part to the challenges associated with finding private developers willing to build affordable housing. Consequently, when the city does successfully negotiate an agreement to this end, council members enjoy bragging about how much they have done for the lower economic workforce. Warehouse at Creekside, an affordable housing development where I reside, is one of those much-bragged-about accomplishments. Warehouse at Creekside received a $6 million grant from the city to build affordable housing. In exchange for the single condition of rent restrictions, developers were gifted $6 million, zero obligation of repayment, significantly reduced property taxes, full occupancy, annual profits, working capital, and the right to sell the building for personal profit. Warehouse at Creekside owners currently enjoy a $374,000 annual net profit, and to the best of my knowledge, utilize the equity of the $6 million gift to create their own for-profit realty company that now manages and profits off of the backs of our lower economic residents. These heroic developers created 500-square-foot, single-bedroom apartments with no laundry hookups, dishwashers, medicine cabinets, linen cabinets, or basic storage of any kind. I don't understand why our council finds this brag-worthy. More importantly, Warehouse at Creekside is not adhering to the terms of the regulatory agreement. As council is aware, owners have unlawfully charged tenants for parking and cable, exceeded rent caps, failed to provide adequate laundry facilities, and effectively prohibited tenants any upward mobility through its profit-driven policies. I formally request that the city take over and operate Warehouse at Creekside as permitted by the regulatory agreement. I also request that council adopt an inclusionary housing ordinance. These actions would both advance the city's goal of affordable housing to all economic segments and be worth boasting about. This community wouldn't be what it is without our workforce. New and better ideas are necessary to provide adequate attainable housing for those of us who support this community through our service industries." The next speaker is Aisha Singleton. "Hello and thank you for your time. I'm writing because, to the best of my knowledge, council members have once again approved a housing project without making any provisions for the local economic workforce. As 2020 highlighted, the local economic workforce is made up of essential workers who ensure the well-being of the community. I am a single mother who works in this community. My associates and I are among the most exposed to COVID, as well as the most adversely affected by the shutdown. Yet the city refuses to make provisions for the local economic workforce to secure attainable home ownership. In other words, council members will happily shop in local stores, enjoy takeout or food delivery by local workers, and accept campaign contributions from business owners who thrive due to local labor but will not represent their local economic workforce constituency. We need your help. This email is to request that council propose and pass an ordinance to require all future housing developments require a portion of inclusionary housing." The next speaker is Karen Finley. "I am writing to you as an essential employee of Temecula with regard to the Heirloom Farms development located at Date Inez in Temecula. To the best of my knowledge, council members have approved this housing project without making any provisions for the local economic workforce. I would like to address comments made at the City Planning Commission meeting in regards to the lack of attainable home ownership opportunities. According to the Planning Commission, this development is as good as Temecula can do, as good as it gets for a $40,000 annual essential employee. I would like to challenge you to rethink your stance on this matter. Your current approach and underlying assumptions are not addressing the issue." The developer representative, Erin Talarchio, stating, "We are building homes from the low $300,000, and there are FHA loans available at 3.5% down, which is quite doable, is not in any manner accommodating your local workforce. I have listened as the commission has read countless letters and continue to be flabbergasted by the responses and lack of comprehension. We, the workforce, are not asking for large square footage and $300,000 homes and subsequently the loans to fund said homes. We are trying to communicate to you that we would like to see the inclusion of smaller homes equating to smaller price points. We are asking for inclusionary homes to be factored into the developments you approve. We are seeking attainable home ownership. A home in the low $300,000 is not even in the ballpark of what your local workforce can afford. As 2020 highlighted, the local economic workforce is made up of essential workers who ensure the well-being of a community. These workers were among the most exposed to COVID, as well as the most adversely affected by the shutdowns. The city's apparent unwillingness to make provisions for the local economic workforce to secure attainable home ownership is unconscionable. It would appear council members would like the privilege to shop in local stores, enjoy takeout and food delivery by local workers, and accept campaign contributions from business owners who thrive due to local labor but will not represent their local economic workforce constituency. Allowing individuals to live where they work supports the city's economy in its entirety. This email is to request that the council propose and pass an ordinance to require all future housing developments require a portion of inclusionary housing." The last comment is from George Harris. "I am a grocer at Trader Joe's. Before this, I was a preschool teacher for sixteen years, seven of which I spent loving and caring for this community's children. I am also a single mother of three. Currently, I live in the city of Paris and commute thirty minutes to work each day. And although I served the community of Temecula for over ten years, I could not afford to live there, live here, not even at a time when I work two jobs, seven days a week, for seventeen hours a day away from my own children. How is this right? How is this fair? In the past, I have achieved home ownership, but after my divorce, I was on my own to care for my children without any additional financial support. It's unrealistic for the council to believe that a single income of $40,000 a year can afford a $300,000 home, especially caring for a family. I work hard for my family and I work hard for this community. Attainable workforce home ownership is not out of this community's reach. It can and should be accomplished. Yimby." Madam Mayor, that concludes public comments on non-adjourned items.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Then we are going to move on to city council reports. And I'm gonna take some liberty here and choose to go first this evening. It's been an horrific past ten months. Coming up, actually, we're coming up on a year with COVID. And there's hardly a family or an individual in this community that hasn't been impacted some way in their household or with a family friend, and we've seen deaths in Temecula. We, our hearts go out to those family members and friends of people who have died. And recently, we lost another couple of dear family members in Temecula. And I'd just like to talk about one of them, who is part of the firefighting family. And his name is Chris Mertz. Chris is a resident of Temecula with his wife. He has three children. His son is a firefighter in San Diego, and his daughter are both in the Air Force. So this is a 100% family of service. And the example starts from the top down. And the example starts from the top down. So obviously, the, the children are emulating what their parents have taught them, and that is to serve others. Unfortunately, Chris passed away as a result of COVID. And he works for the Fire Protection District in Rancho Santa Fe, but as a resident of Temecula. And we are a Cal Fire family. We just want to send our deepest sympathies and empathies to the family and say that, that your husband, your father, he's not forgotten. And he will always remain a part of the Cal Fire family and the Temecula family. You can see his picture there. Chris received a full escort to his services and the overpasses were lined with individuals from cities in southwest Riverside County. How fitting for someone who has given his life over to firefighting service. So we wish the family all the best in the city of Temecula. We help families. Anything you need, you can just email City Hall and, and they'll get ahold of me or any of the council members and you tell us what you need and we'll be there for you. Another dear family member passed away this week. And this gentleman has a long legacy of service in the city of Temecula. Dan Atwood was the owner of Toyota of Temecula Valley for many, many years. And he could have bragged about Toyota of Temecula Valley, and he did. But the thing he bragged the most about was his community. And all the ways that we have to help people in this community. Dan was passionate about the homeless and served on committees for, to, to help find housing and services for the homeless. He was passionate about our local service organizations. He supported the Boys and Girls Clubs and many, many others, Race for the Cure. And I could name a whole list of organizations that were supported by Dan Atwood. He was at every event. He was at the parades. He was a tremendous Temecula cheerleader, his wife Katie and, and their, their daughter. Another family of service. So as a friend of Temecula, Dan Atwood, dear Dan Atwood, formerly owner of Toyota of Temecula Valley is going to be dearly missed. And, and Katie, to you, if there's anything that you need, you let us know. Call City Hall or email me. You've got my email and, you know, we'll do anything that we can to help you through these difficult times. And yet, these aren't the only two people that passed away due to COVID. There are many, many others. And I think it's only fitting that, once, once we're kind of through the worst of it, that the city take a few minutes and remember those people who passed away during this historic time in the world, actually. This has never happened in the world like it has this episode with COVID. So with consent, with concession from my council members, we'll be bringing that back to you. Talking about ways we can have a ceremony or an annual remembrance or something. And then people can submit the names of their loved ones to the city of Temecula. And we'll make sure that they, you know, they're on a list and that they're remembered. And we'll have some kind of ceremony out front of City Hall. And it won't be to remember the bad things. It will be to remember the good things and the people that we've lost and how much we love them. So thank you. Thank you for letting me go first. And so that's all I have for public comments. Oh, no, I have another one, actually. I have one more, but you know what? I'm gonna throw you a curve, John Hall. And I'm gonna let Zach and, and Jessica talk about Sam Hicks Park because they were there for the opening. And I know we have a slide for it. So I am going to move on and who wants to go next? I don't see any hands. Zach, you did raise your hand. All right, there you go. So I just, I passed Sam Hicks Park over to you.
Oh, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so we did a virtual opening this morning and, and on my way in, there were families already playing at this park. So it's, it's quite exciting. Really excited. It's a long time coming for sure. I believe we have a video. And Jonathan, could you put up the video for us?
Hi, I'm Temecula Mayor Mary Ann Edwards. Come rain or come shine, or come wind, it's always a great day at Sam Hicks Park.
Hi, Temecula, Councilmember Zach Schwenk and TCSD President here with you today at our Sam Hicks Playground Enhancement Project. This project has been a long time coming and we're really excited to announce that this playground is now open. So go ahead and come on down to Old Town, maybe visit the museum at some point. We really envisioned this as an opportunity for the museum to use this park as programming as well and really just be an extension of the museum. It'd be a great place for you to grab a picnic, maybe some to-go lunch and come down and enjoy this space with your family. So look forward to seeing everybody out here at Sam Hicks Park.
Hi, Temecula, this is Jessica Alexander. And I'm here right now over at our park here at Old Town. And I'm super excited to say that we have a wonderful park here open for our children and our family. I am really excited to see how this place is going to flourish when we have the, the farmer's markets going and we have our businesses open and running. It's going to be incredible to see the exposure here that's going to happen at the park where people are going to come in and be able to play and have fun and just really come together. So I'd like to thank our community service and also our public works for coming together as a team and being able to develop this along with many other parks that are to come this year. Thank you.
So I noticed how completely wind-free, there was no wind when you were doing your presentations. And they had to chase me across the park twice with my umbrella, so.
You're Mary Poppins there, huh?
Yes, I really was Mary Poppins. So do either of you want to say something else?
I'll add something. I really meant what I said when, when I was sitting there kind of looking at the park in itself because I had really noticed it a couple of weeks ago when I came out of the farmer's market. Like, wow, this is gonna be great. I'm literally going to come to the farmer's market with my kids like we usually do and then just head right over to the park. We can have a picnic. We can kind of hang out, grab food from somewhere else, sit down. It's just gonna be a really good community spot, I think, where everybody's gonna kind of come together. And kids, adults, even seniors, it'll be a great place to kind of sit down and, and just really connect. So I just thank all of you guys for doing all that work. It's beautiful.
Yeah, absolutely. It's great. And I know the museum staff is ecstatic about that opportunity to push out into that space and use that as programming. So great job, everybody.
So why don't we just move on? Do either of you have any council comments other than that?
I do. So I have a slide. I have a slide. And Jonathan can go and throw that up. So as we wind down January, we, we, we roll into February, which is American Black History Month. So this year, we'll be doing a virtual celebration of American Black History. The Temecula Valley Museum and Old Town Temecula Community Theater invite you to a month-long virtual celebration of American Black History. This is presented on our various social media outlets throughout February. The Temecula Valley Museum will honor the contributions to American history by Black Americans through links on the museum's website, and that's TemeculaValleyMuseum.org. This will be featuring music, history, culture, food, art, and a virtual photography exhibit titled Through Darkness to Light: Photographs Along the Underground Railroad. The museum's website will also feature a recorded presentation on the Underground Railroad by a local professor, Mount Santa Senta College Assistant Professor of African-American Studies, Dr. Morgan Hudenpile. And the Old Town Temecula Community Theater Celebration will include a free virtual classical music concert streaming on Facebook and on YouTube, featuring classical cellist Anita Groff. And that's on Saturday, February 20th at 5:00 PM. And then later in the month, we present the second show of Alan Engray's Freedom Trilogy Baird, a new musical. And that's streaming free as well, Monday, February 22nd at 5:00 PM on Facebook and on YouTube. The celebration of American Black History goal is to celebrate together and remember how important Black Americans have been to every chapter of our nation's story. Thank you. And that is, that is all I have.
Very good. And there's a lot, there is a lot to do. So I hope people will really take advantage. You can have some fun and actually learn some very important parts of history. So Jessica, you have anything else for, for council comments? Nothing? All right. So Matt, your hands up.
All right. Just a couple of real quick items. The first one was, I know we've been getting over the last couple of meetings, a lot of comments on the affordable housing issue in, in Temecula. And Mr. City Manager, I'm wondering if, you know, I just received an email from Luke Watson. I think it was earlier today, as a matter of fact, regarding some of the concerns that were raised by residents of some of the facilities and so forth. And could we maybe bring back an item at some point that, that sort of updates the community on our housing element? What we're working on currently right now? How many affordable housing units we have approved over the last several years and, and anything that's in the pipeline? And then, you know, address some of the issues that were brought up as well. I'd, I'd appreciate that. Thanks, sir. And then I do have one slide, maybe. I just wanted to say, the last meeting we had, we all divvied out. God, there's that picture. So I gotta update that.
It looks good.
So we all went through the boards and commissions assignments last time and I was placed on the RCTC again. And I'm happy to announce that at our first meeting, I was elected to the executive board by the other commissioners representing what are considered the large cities within that region. And so the good news is Mike Nagar served on that for, for many years and, and served on the executive board. And, and with his retirement, we haven't quite given up that hold. And I look forward to continuing our, our work with RCTC moving forward and advocating for a lot of the projects we need, especially along the I-15 corridor.
That it? Are you good?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
All right. RCTC also, they're the, they're the funding handlers. So they're the agency that manages funds that come from the federal government and the state government and the TOMFunds as well. And so we always want to have a presence on RCTC. It's been, it's a very, very effective board for, for all the cities in southwest Riverside County and the county in general. Stu, I think you're last. Sorry. Did your lights go off a few minutes ago?
They did, yes. I, I just gotta be a little bit more active here, rock back and forth or something.
Yeah.
Um, so since our wonderful governor has released us from COVID hell, we should support all our small businesses out there. And, you know, I, I heard in the public comments that that's a very important, I totally agree. As a small business person, I totally agree. We have to think local. So if you've got to go out and buy something, eat somewhere, find your local mom and pop. You know, Walmart's got record profits. Costco's got record profits. Now it's time to spread the wealth into our community. So please, people out there, shop local. Thank you.
Thank you, Stu. All right. So now we're, we, this is a little bit different, but we're moving the board and commission reports closer to the front of the meeting. So we're gonna go to board and commission reports right now. And I have first Planning Commission. So who's up? Yay, Ron Giriyo, how are you?
I think we have some slides somewhere. Okay. All right. So at our last meeting on January 20th, this is a very innovative way of concealing telecommunications antenna and adjacent equipment. The tower that you're seeing there, the clock tower, was added on to an existing building to, to hold that new equipment. And it does a great job of providing more service to the people in that area as most of these antennas do. What's interesting about this picture is how far we've come with these telecommunications antennas from the full palm trees, which is coming up next, which have also come a long way, to innovative ways that staff now can work with our applicants to come up with something like this tower. The clock works. It adds to that existing building. And it just gets rid of that, you know, the old towers that we used to look at. If you drive around Temecula, you'll probably drive past telecommunications towers you don't even know are there. We have one that's hidden in a huge flagpole. We have some that are hidden in telephone poles. We have others that are a three-foot extension of an existing street lamp. We have some that look like old-fashioned water tanks. We also have one I thought was very, very unique back in the day in front of Chaprel High School. The corner of Nicholas and Winchester is the mess of it. That also contains an antenna. So we've come a long way from 20, from 25 years ago with these antennas to what you're seeing today. It's a, it's really great. And if you can see that this is located 41258 Margory Road. And that was passed unanimously by the commission.
It's my dentist's office. My dentist's office is in there. My dentist, yeah, yes.
And the next slide. Pour five more. There we go. Okay. So this, we didn't approve the arrow, but we approved the antenna behind it. You can't really see this, but the materials that are used in these full palm, pine and palm trees today have come a long, long way from what we saw back 25, 30 years ago. They were just atrocious. Today, the materials are so realistic that you can hardly, hardly tell they're fake. And this one is a street, you know, freeway shot, shot. It's by Rancho Ford 422069, here drive. And again, it just adds more communication availability to business owners and citizens in that area. And next. Okay. Again, on the 20th, we approved a conditional use permit for Hilton Garden Inn, which is 104-room suite type. That's important. Hotel currently under construction along Justin Avenue in the Uptown specific plan. They asked to have a type 70 alcohol beverage control license allowed to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits. What a type 70 is, and by the way, type 70 is one of 99 ABC licenses that are issued throughout the state. We don't deal with all of those, but this one is rather unique. In that type 70s are given to suite-type hotels and motels, which normally offer, offer, oh, what's the word? Hospitality, free drinks and stuff like that. And anyhow, that's, so we, we go, we went ahead and approved this one unanimously as well. It just gives them a chance to be a little bit more competitive in the community. And it does serve kind of a public safety services as it keeps people that are drinking kind of located in one spot instead of driving around the street. So that's my report. Any questions? Thank you.
Good job. And next, we're going to hear from the Public Traffic and Safety Commission.
Yes, good evening, everyone. How you doing?
Good evening.
With the new procedures for our reports, et cetera, we're gonna be off a little bit in that tonight's meeting is two nights prior to our meeting. So the only activity I'll be able to report this evening to use the agenda that'll be coming up. But it'll be good stuff and the next chair will be able to report on what was done. So the first item is swearing in Commissioner David Maddox. I think he's gonna make a great commissioner. I'm glad he got chosen for ours and look forward to that. This, this meeting will also have election of the chairperson and vice chairperson. It's been my honor to serve as chair for three years. But COVID has its advantages. A lot of people are at home, they're not working out of the area. And so we have a lot of people that want to be chair and vice chair. And it also doesn't hurt that the council is really stepping up requirements. So that's a good thing. We'll be getting an update on the Riverside County Water District Temecula Park Pipeline Replacement Project. As you know, that when you're heading towards the 15 freeway north, it's down to one lane at the moment. And there'll be constant updates from the city so that you can take alternate routes. We'll also manage the rustic blend drive traffic calming concepts and golden rod traffic calming requests. So again, it's been a pleasure working as close with you for the last three years. You'll see me in the audience once we get back to chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. You've done a great job. I love Traffic Commission, it's where I grew up.
Yep.
All right. So next we have, we're gonna do the Commission for Race Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. And this is their first time at a city council meeting. And so Tiffany Baker, are you with us? I see your picture.
Yes, I am. Hi.
There you are.
Today. Good evening, everyone. I am happy to be here and to report on the ready commission. So we had our inaugural. So we had our inaugural meeting on January 14th. And we also had welcome and introductory remarks from the city manager and the executive director. And Peter gave us a wonderful brown act training. And the commission also selected its chair and vice chair, which is myself, Tiffany Baker, as well as the vice chair, is Amel de Warta. And we are your chair and vice chair for 2021. And the commission meets next week, next month on February 11th. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Tiffany. You, I'm very, very excited about this commission. All the council members are. It gives us an opportunity to review things and see where we are and do status checks and make sure that everyone feels welcome and is included in everything. You know, we don't, we don't want a divided city. We want a fully united city, Temecula. Everybody loves living here, I'm assuming, but a lot of people love living here. And so we want to just continue with that and make sure that everyone has a chance to participate. And I know you wanted to get more involved with with the local government, and so here you are.
And you know, I'm really happy to serve, and I'm glad that you said we don't want a divided city because that is exactly what the Ready Commission is, is to make sure we can all come together in a city that we love. And we are very much honored to serve, and we are looking forward to assist the city in its goals and its efforts around this.
Well, that's wonderful, and we are very excited. So I think I'm going to be at your meeting, and I think the mayor pro tem's going to be at your meeting. So not, you know, like in spirit, anyway, you will virtually will be at your meeting. So we're very excited to see everyone seated. Wonderful group of people.
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
You guys have a good evening.
All right. So I've been sitting here and I folded my agenda, so now let me unfold the. Right. So we've also moved up our public safety report to to closer at the beginning of the meeting so that everybody's still tuning in. And so today, we're going to hear from Zachary Hall. Police chief, captain.
Good evening, everybody. Slide should pop up here that covers some stats. Make sure we get the right one. Okay, so this is the year-end stats. You'll see, I'll read the current year, which was 2020, and you'll see that there are some variances between that and the prior year. If you have questions about them, I can answer them. If you see some huge disparity like in the mall, it's probably because of COVID and the mall was closed. If you look at our calls for service, this Temecula Sheriff's Station handled 81,378 calls for service. This included deputy initiated files and traffic, 72,297 the year before. Traffic citations, 13,759 traffic citations issued, 283 DUI arrests, 1,884 traffic collisions investigated. In our special teams felony arrests, these are onsite felony arrests, 265 felony arrest warrants of 119. They made 667 misdemeanor onsite arrests and served 741 misdemeanor warrants. The investigative bureau had 378 cases assigned, and they closed 532. The mall, you'll see the stats drop there primarily because the mall was closed or reduced service most of this time. Calls for service, 1,311. Felony arrests and filings were 12. Misdemeanor arrests or filings were 96. Total volunteer hours, for which most of the year I barred them from being in the station or spending time with deputies, as most of our volunteers are part of an at-risk population. Previous year was 20,000 hours of volunteer service. This year, only 5,767. So that's our year-end report. If you have any questions about that, I can answer them now, or I will move on to alarm information that I was asked to discuss.
Anyone? Looks like you can move right on.
Okay, so I was asked to look into some alarm statistics because we're working through the final touches of a false alarm ordinance. This false alarm ordinance will give the sheriff's deputies the ability to bill when they respond to false alarms. So just as an example, the analysis I did covers the last four years. So when I talk about these alarm calls for service, I'm going to talk about false alarms only. These aren't alarms that turned out to be legitimate, a broken window, an actual burglary. These are just alarms that, you know, the cat tripped it, they, the resident opened or closed garage door, tripping the alarm, or maybe a business who could have hit either a panic alarm, a commercial burglary, but they all turned out to be false. Over the last four years, this is 17, 18, 19, and 20, the sheriff's department deputies responded to 22,560 false alarms. In 2017, that was 6,009. In 2018, that was 5,822. In 2019, that was 5,884. And the number dropped in 2020 to 4,847, presumably because more people stayed home more often. Out of these calls for service, these 22,000-plus calls for service, just over a quarter of them are residential. So 6,117 came from houses. The other 16,443 were businesses. So that's just to kind of give you an overview of just about how much time we spend on these false alarms. And on average, if we make it to the false alarm at a house, it takes with drive time, deputy investigation time to walk around the residence, look at doors, windows, check the knobs, maybe talk to the neighbors, see if anything was going on, try to contact the homeowner. You're looking at about 30 minutes worth of time.
Wow.
Commercial alarms are significantly longer. Let's say middle of the night and Walmart has a commercial burglary, or Costco does, or a store in a strip mall. We're maybe calling in the helicopter, we're checking roof access, we're checking perimeter, we're checking more doors. If we do find an unlocked or open door, then it turns into a interior check. So the majority of these calls, 16,443, could potentially have taken more than a half hour and considerably more if we did, in fact, find an open door. And then any one of these residents or businesses where an open door is located, we are then usually waiting there for some responsible party to arrive to either secure the residence or to walk, you know, for us to walk through to decide if anything was missing. I can answer any questions about those, but that's to give, as we finalize this alarm ordinance that you're going to be hearing about and how we we may move forward through the billing process for repeat false alarms, I want you to have this information handy, and and I'll bring it forward again. And if you have, want me to enhance any of this information or mine down deeper into actual man-hours or the estimated cost, I can do any of that, too.
So, Captain, I know that we'll have an education period or, you know, probably some type of grace period to allow people to work on their system or, you know, put a plan in place at their home or something like that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it won't just be bang, there it is one day, and you start, we start issuing citations and fines. So there will be.
There will be an education component to this that will take place. And then presumably, and I can't remember exactly, there's some, you know, warning system.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the the ordinance that the council adopted includes, I I want to recall, it's like a three-strike rule.
Yeah.
Basically providing like, you know, two, two freebies, and then the third one, you're on the hook for for the penalty. So that is obviously, it was reported out two weeks ago. That has been a huge deterrent on the fire side, and we're going to expect this is going to have a similar reaction on the law enforcement.
Okay, excellent.
Ma'am, it's actually in the ordinance. It's alarm systems which generate more than three false alarms in a 90 consecutive day period are considered nuisance alarms.
Okay, and and how how exactly will we educate or how will we instruct people who have alarms? Is it as they, with their first false alarm?
Well, there's a, there's a permitting process, right, where they're going to have to apply and register this alarm. Presumably, there will be education materials provided then. We will do social media advertising. We will give a presentation at a city meeting.
That's excellent. Okay, so I understand it's when they're, when they, during the signup period, when they call, really, they're signing up for police protection from the service that provides the alarm or similar situation. So, okay, that makes perfect sense. Thank you. Tens of thousands of hours.
Correct.
That's amazing. I was shocked when I first heard that number. So and I think probably a lot of people will be. So thank you very much, and we're glad that we're going to be getting that under control.
Madam Mayor, real, real quick.
Yes, Matt.
Just, I appreciate the report, Captain Hall, and and look forward to seeing those numbers start to drop. And and really, that's, you know, it's stunning how much, you know, of a response we've had on on false alarms. So, you know, it's definitely needed. And I mean, just a back-of-the-envelope calculation. That means, you know, we basically have two full-time deputies working just on false alarms every year. I mean, that's the equivalent where, you know, if you're to put it into that perspective, that's a lot of resources that, you know, can be dedicated to, you know, a lot more important issues in in town. And I know you take every every alarm that goes off very seriously as though it's, you know, the real thing, and you have to. Really appreciate the report and look forward to, look forward to seeing our deputies actually, you know, engaged in in the things that are a little bit more important. So I appreciate that.
And again, for some additional perspective, very few of these are actually residential alarms. Like, we actually have a pretty reasonable amount compared to some of the areas, other areas I worked into. It comes out to about four to five residential alarms per shift, per day. So not, not crazy. It's the commercial alarms that are the problem. And let's say, for example, a lot of these, we have problems with, like, say, a school, for instance. Well, a school takes more than a deputy, or it would take a deputy a long time to walk through that school. And then if they do encounter a suspect, they don't want to be there by themselves. While it is true that it is like two full-time deputies' jobs, some of these, say, the interior search of a Costco, take more than one deputy. You know, it takes a team of deputies, and usually the canine comes with them. And then usually there's a helicopter providing air support, and there's deputies that maintain a perimeter on the building while the deputies are inside. So some of these turn into pretty protracted events with lots of resources.
Well, that demonstrates how necessary these measures are. So we want to get our deputies, you know, keep our deputies in their zones, patrolling as much as we can. So thank you, Chief. Thank you, Matt. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Number one, rate rave wave, wave reading of standard ordinance and resolutions. Number two, approve action minutes of January 12th. Number three, approve listed demands. Number four, adopt ordinance 2021-01, amending Temecula Municipal Code, Section 2.40.100, adding new commission reference, and that's the second reading. Number five, adopt ordinance 2021-2, adding Chapter 2.10 to the Temecula Municipal Code regarding the filing campaign finance disclosure statements, and that's the second reading. Number six, approve the amended salary schedule to include administrative changes made to the minimum wage adjustments effective January 1st, 2020. And I will, does anybody want to pull anything? And if not, then I will accept a motion and a second.
I'll move consent.
A second.
Thank you. And Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes. I, Councilmember Alexander, your item is noted. Councilmember Schwenk?
Hi.
Mayor Edwards?
Hi.
Councilmember Ron?
Hi.
Councilmember Stewart?
Hi.
All right, that item passed unanimously, and right now, I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting to the Community Services District, the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, the Temecula Housing Authority, and/or the Temecula Public Financing Authority. So take it away, President Zack.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm going to call tonight's Temecula Community Services District meeting to order. May we have the roll call, please, since we remain in the virtual setting?
Yes, Director Alexander?
Hi.
Director Edwards?
Here.
Director Ron?
I'm still here.
President Schwenk?
And I'm here.
And Director Stewart?
Here.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
Thank you very much. I'll go and dispense with the reading of those rules, and we will move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. We have one item this evening, item number seven, approve action minutes of January 12th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion.
Come on.
Second.
Motion and a second. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes. Director Alexander?
Hi.
Director Edwards?
Hi.
Director Ron?
Hi.
Director Stewart?
Hi.
President Schwenk?
Hi. Thank you very much. That item passes five-o. Thank you, everyone. Do we have a director's report this evening, Director Hawkins?
Mr. President, just thank you and the other members for providing outstanding TCSD-related reports a little earlier. Although I'm pretty happy, I suspect CS Commission Chair Levine may be a little worried that his commission reports may be taken away in the future. But besides that, that concludes my report.
All right. Not a chance. We won't take anything away from Commissioner Levine. Thanks, sir. General Manager's report?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
Thanks, sir. Any other directors' reports tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll go and adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting, February 9th. We're adjourned.
Yes, sir. And I'm going to call to order the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. And could we have the same roll call, please? I don't think anybody's missing, but let's go ahead for the record.
Yes, Director Alexander?
I'm here.
Director Ron?
Here.
Director Schwenk?
I'm here.
Director Stewart?
I've been left.
And I'm still here. And moving on to public comments, are there any SADA public comments?
There are none.
There are not. So we have consent calendar item. Number eight, approve action minutes of January 12th, 2021. I need a motion and a second, please.
Move consent.
Second.
All right. Need a roll call?
Director Schwenk?
Hi.
Director Alexander?
Hi.
Director Ron?
Hi.
Director Stewart?
Hi.
And Chair Edwards?
There you go, Stu. I'm last. I. All right, thank you. Do we have anything? Executive Director, Board of Directors, anything?
Nothing.
Not?
Chair.
All right, then I'm going to adjourn the SADA meeting for the next regular meeting, which will be February 9th, 2021, 5:30. Okay? So nothing from the Housing Authority, Public Finance, or Temecula, but we're reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. And we're ready for, nothing, our report. So Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jonathan, I just have one slide. I guess it's a bit of old news because it did happen yesterday, and of course, it's kind of integral to to our economy here. But yesterday, the governor of California did lift the stay-at-home restrictions, is counties back into a tiered system for us in Riverside County. That pushes us back into a purple tier, the most restricted tier. However, that does allow outdoor dining as well as hair salons and barber shops. And so definitely encouraged. So like Councilman Stewart mentioned, we are also promoting shop local. So now you have reason to go visit all these folks right here in the city of Temecula. So with that, it concludes my report, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And City Attorney Peter, anything?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, we have no reportable actions from closed session, and other than that, I don't have a further report.
All right, thank you. In that case, I would like to stand adjourned this evening in the name of friend Dan Atwood and Chris Merz, firefighter, Temecula resident. So I have a motion, please.
I'm moved. I'm moved.
And a second. And thank you very much. And in those memory, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, everybody.